What did you do after being elected?
Um, so I, the first thing I did was got really excited and I called my wife and my kids and told them and then a bunch of other people. But are you referring to like the first thing that I did as far as like to help the town or just in general? Anything? Yeah, so we'll leave it as the, the night off, right? So I got really excited and I started calling everyone who ran out and supported me and made sure I gave them all the good news.
I said you did a safe thing as well. So when I got first got elected, I looked at it going, oh no, I got elected. And then I realized the next morning was like, oh boy, I'm elected. So now it became, what can we do first, right? And uh, it was talk to a lot of people, many of your parents and to figure out what needs to be done first. And then uh, we got to it. And it was still, when I got reelected, it was like, oh no. Three more years, right? Of doing it again and make sure we do the right thing. So it's hard. Great question.
How do you, hm, how do you include kids when making a decision?
How do we include kids when making a decision? Okay, um, so I'll take this one first. So a lot of our decisions have to do with kids, right? So our, when I first moved to Free Town, my, I remember my wife and her brothers and sisters talking about how great Free Town was. So that played a big, a big part in my decision to run for election. So when we look at things such as outdoor activities, sports, schools, we, we think of the kids and what those memories are for you growing up. So when you get my age, many, many, many years from now, you start thinking about your community, your neighbor, your neighbors, your friends, your schools, and then those play into decisions we make. Um, you, you are our future. Everything we do today affects what you have when you grow up. So we, we take deep pride and a lot of consideration of what we do for Free Town based on our, our kids. Uh, I have four kids myself, I think one of them is here in the audience. So a, a lot of the things I do, I think about how is this gonna be beneficial to you uh, twenty years from now, fifteen years from now, tomorrow? Yeah, what about you Jared?
So we all have a different part, we all work together, but we all have different parts of the board that we do. And the part that I oversee is parks and recreation. So um, along with what Selectman Lopes just said, I also get to work with all these different baseball, football, all these different people and making sure that we have the right amount of space for you all to use and how to use it. So um, that plays a, obviously a big part in what I do and it's for a lot of kids that play sports that are um, in the audience today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you, what do you think the schools are doing right to prepare students for the future?
So I think your question is, what are the schools doing right to prepare, to prepare you all for the future? Alright, great question, that's, that's a good question. Well, it starts here, it starts at FES, right? At Free Town Elementary School, uh, then you go to grays, then the middle school and the high school. And our teachers, I know this for a fact, our teachers love and care for all their students, right? They're, they don't just come here to teach you, they come here to show you how adults should behave and, and how society is and, and not just about math and coloring, but how to be yourself, right? How to express yourself in the most polite and, and beautiful way, right? Your schools are preparing you for tomorrow, for the future, right? We talk about parks and recs, fifteen, twenty years from now, well guess what? Fifteen, twenty years, you're gonna be an adult. And when you become an adult, it starts, it starts here in school, you're role models, right? These are the people that are showing you, not, just like moms and dads, yas and pepe's, grandmas and grandpas, they're showing you how to be an adult, right? Can't be a kid forever, I know, it stinks, I wish I was still a kid in so many ways, I know, I see you out there. But at the same time, it's uh, it's about when you become an adult and they're teaching you that. They're teaching you how to be an adult, uh, how to be a person, a good person. Right, teachers? That's right.
I, I agree a hundred percent with what Selectman Lopes just said. Um, it's not just education based, I think that your schools are teaching you a lot of other fundamentals about growing up in the real world and um, all while still being a kid and, and being able to enjoy your classmates, all while doing the, the real fun stuff like math and science and stuff, so, yeah.
That's right, thank you, great question.
What is one thing you would improve in Free Town?
Great question Lincoln, let's see, one thing I'll improve in Free Town. Huh, well, we've been improving Free Town little by little, for years and years and years, since the beginning of time. Uh, if I were to change anything in Free Town, anything at all, maybe some, some noise barriers around town. A little quieter, so that the animals can enjoy themselves and we can sleep in peace. Tough one.
It is a tough one, that's a hard hitting question buddy.
What is one thing you've accomplished as a selectman that you're most proud of?
Alright, so this isn't really all that exciting to you guys, but um, we, we, I think you all might know the police officer that's sitting in the back of the room right now. Um, and he'll tell you that they had a big problem with communication. And they were trying to use their radios and they couldn't use their radios. Imagine being out on a call and they were trying to talk back and, and no one could hear them. So we worked on something and we got them new towers that were able to make it so that they can communicate. Sounds pretty simple, but very important for their jobs. So that's something that, um, like I said, might not be the most exciting thing, but I'm very proud of that we were able to do it.
I agree with Select, uh, Selectman Zager on this one, because that was one of the things that we heard about um, from a lot of people, is communication. So while he took the communication road, because I would, I was gonna say the same exact thing. One of the things that we all, I'm proud of is the communication we have with other towns, right? Uh, for instance, next year you're all going to grays, right? You're gonna start meeting some of your friends from Lakeville. So that was one thing that communication between both towns um, vastly improved. So that's one of the things that I'm very proud of, that now we know what's going on for them and vice versa. That way, we're all on the same page, because we, we're so entwined and so connected with Lakeville that it's very important to know how they're feeling and doing as well. So uh, being friends and being good neighbors. Great question.
Thank you.
Why are the street signs different colors in different areas?
Oh, good question. So are you talking about, when you say street signs, what, are you talking about the speed signs, the, the?
The, like the name signs?
Oh, the name signs?
Yeah.
So one of the jobs we have as selectmen, we're also the road commissioners. So we work with the police and fire and, and different people in town, um, especially businesses, to make sure that the signs we put out there are appropriate. So for instance, you have the new stop signs around town with the little flashing lights, right? We did that because people were concerned about speeding and traffic and intersections. So we made it more aware, made you more aware. Can you see them far away? Yes. Then you have the yellow signs around like fire stations, police stations, intersections, like hey, there's a yield coming, which means slow down, not speed up, like some people in mass like to think. Um, so when you start driving, it's to help you know where you're going, right? Uh, no parking signs is another good one, we, that came up recently, no parking signs around town. Why do we put parking signs? Well, like, like say you're leaving FES and there's a very tight turn, well, we put a no parking sign there so that there's no cars in the way. So that way, the buses can get out safely and everything else. That make sense?
Yeah.
Did I miss any of them?
No, but I mean, are you referring to like street names?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think, and I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, I think it might have to do with if it's a private road. As to, so we're not in charge of uh, the colors and stuff, but we are, um, you know, we do have to help make guidance a lot of times through, through the police department um, and the highway department as to what signs need to go where. But um, as far as, you know, most of the street signs are green, right? That say the street that you all live on, some of them I think are blue.
And red.
And red. Yeah, I don't, I don't recall any of the red ones, but the, um, I'm, I'm not sure. I think we're gonna have to look into that and see if we can get an answer for you. I apologize.
Yeah, um, thank you for clarifying, I got your question completely wrong, but, so, thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm with Selectman Zager is, um, we'll look into that, I'm curious now too.
Yeah.
Cause you're right, I have seen blue and green signs. Awesome, there is, any, any uh, insight on that?
Not specifically, I think the red signs used to be here just for private ways, I, I don't see them anymore. As far as creating of the blue names signs for the roads, I think it really wasn't for the city of the town, select, but I'm sure there's some uh, national regulations and information.
Right.
Every, every street sign is out there about one day, it's passing through some sort of regulation and.
There you go. Yeah, good question, you got us stumped, that was good. Have to write down and down, get the real answer.
Is it hard for you to make decisions that everyone might not agree with?
Yes, uh, so his question is, is it hard to make decisions that not everyone might agree with? And that's probably the hardest thing about this job, right? We, we're not, we have families, we, we, Jared grew up in the, the community, I live here, I have children, I go to the schools here, I, I coach here. So every decision you make, it's not gonna be popular with every single person, right? And that's, that's, and you can't really lead by example by doing that, because there's so many opinions and everyone's right, entitled to their opinion. What I try to do, I speak for myself, is try to, what's the most common sense thing to do? What, you know, not about right or wrong, I really can't think about everyone loving me or hating me, it's, if anything, not just being a selectman and just being a, a person, you have to worry about what, what, what you're dealing with, right? So common sense plays a, a very big, big play in how I make decisions, uh, what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. If you're telling me that I need to paint every building green, I'm gonna ask you why? Why just green and not just, not blue, right? And people are like, well, I like blue better or I like green better. What makes sense for the whole town, right? What makes sense for the town as a whole, that's how we make decisions, what's better for the town, right? Do we need fifty baseball fields or do we need buildings and businesses and schools? A little mix of everything, right? And that's the hardest decision, it really is. Even answering this question is hard, um, because you have to make a decision, everyone's listening to you and some people might, might not love the answer. Um, but those, sometimes those are things that come in your head at that exact moment. So you gotta make the best decisions possible and it really comes down to that.
Absolutely, I think that I like to make my decisions based on things that I've observed and, and, and as well as life experiences, right? And not try and let someone influence my decision and just do what I feel is right. I like to listen to everyone and formulate my own opinion and go based on that, not who's gonna be the loudest person in my decision. And you know what, in life, we'll all make right and wrong decisions, but long as we learn from them, then, you know, I feel like most of the time, we can make good decisions based on just doing what we think is right. Thank you.
It's a hard question, it's a very hard question, boys and girls, like, like, right? Watch this, show of hands, who wants chicken nuggets every single day this week? Okay, look around, right? Show of hands, who wants pizza all day this week? So who won? So who won that discussion, right? So now it's up to us to figure out who had more votes. Tough, right? Yeah. Fine, chicken nuggets or pizza a week, perfect. Donuts, now we're talking. Alright, let's see what her question is.
How do you make our town safer each year?
How do we make our town safer each year? Another hard question. So we work a lot with our police and fire and as well as our Department of Highway, the Public Works Highway, to make sure that our roads are clean, make sure our police have everything they have, they can get as far as training, visibility, same thing with our fire department, make sure they have the right equipment. Um, to keep them safe, to make sure that you're safe. Um, we do have, every so often we have to make rules and regulations or laws or, to make sure that what we see, we fix, right? And that's, we chip away at it, are we perfect? No, I don't think we're perfect, but perfect's very hard to get to, right? Are we safe? Yeah, we, we're safe, we have a very good police department, a very, a very fantastic fire department as well. And you gotta trust them, you gotta trust, you gotta trust them to do their job, right? And give them, and listen to what they have to say as far as equipment they need, uh, new uniforms, new training, uh, especially for schools and everything else. It's a team effort, it really is, and, and it really is a team effort. And then working with school committees and, and schools and, and other selectmen and, it's a, it's a really big team effort, it really is.
Absolutely, um, I, I think Selectman Lopes nailed it, that um, there's a, there's a lot of different things that we do, but um, it's really working with other departments like the police and the fire and stuff, those are really what we do to help make the town safer. Because we're not here day to day, right? We, this is, well, we are in the sense that we live in the town, but meaning, you know, we have jobs um, that we're all involved in. So it's really working with them and taking the guidance um, from all our first responders, uh, that really, as well as our office. Um, making sure that we help make the right decisions to get the, the right equipment or people in place to be able to help to make sure that, you know, this town stays as safe as possible. Thank you.
How do you become a selectman?
So you have to go out and you get forty signatures um, from different people who are registered voters in town and then you get put on the ballot. Then the fun begins and you have to start campaigning and get all your moms and dads and teachers that live in town to come out and vote for us. Um, and then basically whoever gets the most votes wins. And then you're in for three years, so Selectman Lopes this year and me the year before, we were both reelected for another three years. So um, yeah, and then it, it rotates, the, the other selectman that's here is gonna be the next one, that's not here, I'm sorry. He'll be the next one up for reelection, um, and then that's how it goes. So yeah, so some, some years, some people are fortunate enough that they don't have anyone running against them, other years, there's multiple people running. So uh, it all depends, but yeah.
But you're absolutely correct, Selectman Zager. Um, and right before you put your name on the ballot, you, you ask yourself, you ask your family, your friends, say, I'm gonna run, what do you think I should do when I run, right? Before that, you have to have the passion for it, because like, like the question we just had, sometimes you can get a little tough picky decisions. So you have to make sure you're prepared for that. Um, the best way to do that is to ask questions, a lot, a lot of questions. And I'm still asking questions, even though I have three more years, I still have questions that I need answered, right? So it starts with the curiosity, right? Just like when, when you're reading a book, you wanna know what's on the next page and you kinda, you look ahead. You have to look at that when you're, you're running and some days they're good stories, other days they're not so great stories. And you have to kind of balance those two together. Uh, but passion, it'll, it'll lead you the right way. So that's my answer. Passion. Great question. Tough question this year.
What do you think you, what do you think are the town's biggest issues in the next five years, how will you take care of them?
I like it Logan, I like it. Wow, great question. So his question is, what are the, what do we, what do we think our town's biggest issues are coming up for the next five years? Wow, five years, five years is a long time. You guys would be like, what, graduating high school by then? No, sorry. Pretty close, pretty close, so five years, um, gosh, five years. There's, so, good thing we live in Massachusetts, right? Where, where very well insulated in so many ways from the national world, right? The, the rest of the United, rest of the United States in, in so many ways. Um, over the next five years, it, it's usually the same things that happened the previous five years, right? We're always struggling to keep up. I think the next five years, to keep up with everything going on in the world is gonna be the toughest things we gotta face. It, it could be anything from finding more money, building more buildings, um, figuring out how to cut the grass or making sure the lights stay on. Over the next five years, we have new people coming in, new people moving out and then their, their wants and needs are gonna change. So over the next five years, I look at it like, when I look at my grandma, right? My, my wife's grandma, she's ninety years old, her needs are gonna change. So how do I protect her needs and her friends' needs in their same age? Then we look at uh, how many bridges we might have to replace or what new buildings we have to put up because of that. The school's gonna get bigger, so those are things that are always coming up. To put your finger on just one, oh gosh, I don't know, uh, there isn't just one, there's, they, they all, at the end of the day, they all come together, like a big circle. It starts and ends at the same place. What do we need? What do we want? How do we get there? It's a tough one Logan.
I think that we all sit up here and I think most of you like Free Town, right? Love Free Town, right? Yeah, as do we. So um, you know, the town I think is growing and what we have to think about is how to make it stay the place that we all know and love while making it available for other people. Um, and it's tough, right? Because these schools, you know, we need to make sure that we have enough space for our students. Um, we wanna make sure that we have enough place for our town hall, for, for everything else. Um, all without spending too much money, right? Because we don't, your parents all don't want us to spend too much money because it affects them. So uh, there's a very, it's a, it's a balance. Um, so it's, it's a tough thing and that, I don't know that that'll change ever, right? It, it's something that's always gonna continue on, but to me, that's the biggest challenge over the next five years. Um, and then it'll probably be the next five years after that as well.
Yeah. That's the end of it, that's really the answer, is it's, it doesn't change whether it's next five, past five, the next ten or fifteen, there's always a need and a want, right? And we, and it's our job to kinda, in so many ways, read the tea leaves, right? Figure out what the needs and wants and figure out that balance like Selectman Zager said. It's, you can't do too much on one side because you upset the other side. So you have to really fi- find that, like, that, yeah, the middle of the road, the balance, to make sure that we're doing the right thing for everybody. Everyone gets a little piece versus one person or one group getting a big chunk of things, how about we spread it out, right? Um, and that's probably the hardest thing it is, is really making sure we're doing that evenly. So, tough question, good job.
Do you make decisions with other people or by yourself?
So we're a board, right? And we have to make decisions based on if we're making a decision that requires a vote in order to get it to pass, right? If I wanted to rename Free Town Elementary School, I would need to convince either the other selectman that's not here or Selectman Lopes to do it with me, right? So well, I can't make a decision like that and I never would, I love this school. But the, the, um, that question, that thing, whatever that decision would be, would have to get at least two out of the three of us to do that.
And, and believe me, it, we don't always agree to each other, right? Not that we disagree often, but we do sometimes have a lot of questions of things we might be saying. Uh, Selectman Zager and I, we only can discuss things on camera, on, from the microphone. So when we make decisions, a lot of times we're talking about it for the first time. Actually, I would say ninety-nine point nine, nine point percent of the time, we're talking about it for the first time alive in person. So it's always good to hear a different opinion, right? Well, my opinion might be one thing, I, I like apples, Selectman Zager likes bananas, right? So how do we get to the perfect smoothie or the perfect salad, food salad? Well, we have to work together and mix and match, right? And sometimes when I ask questions, he answers them. He may look at it completely different than I do, but, but his opinion matters to me. So I look at that with, sometimes with his glasses on going, hm, that makes sense, I never thought of that, that way. So by being a board, we work as a team, right? Something we all know something about, right? As a team, we make decisions together, right? Does it mean if you, if they make a decision and I said no and they said yes, I'm upset with them? No, that happens all the time. There are decisions that are two to one very often and then it's one of those things that you have to either learn more about it or you kinda have to get, get, get through it and then move on. You, you can't, we make hundreds of decisions every week, right? Especially on camera. And those decisions, you have to live with them, at the end of the day. But it, they're okay because we did it as a team, what's better for the town? What makes sense? Alright, awesome.
Are there any new events or celebrations happening in town for kids?
Well, off the top of our heads, Lakeside Festival is coming up uh, this weekend, is it this weekend?
Uh, no, it's the end of the month.
End of the month. Are you guys going?
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, we also have, let's see, the Fourth of July celebration coming up. I, I believe many of you drew some pictures for us, alright? So you should be hearing who the winner is soon, alright? So I looked at them, good job everybody, those that participated. What else is coming up? I know there's some yoga coming up at the park, uh, there's, there's also the concerts this summer, like we had last summer, anybody go to those? Alright? Yeah? And there's plenty of uh, sports going around town, I know there's softball's full swing, football's starting up, baseball's uh, is happening. Uh, what else is out there? Gosh, there's, there's some races coming up in town, right? So you guys are almost out of school, that's a big one, right? What else is going on in town? There's so many things, did I miss any?
Not that I can think of, I'm gonna ask you a question, how about that? Is there anything that you wanna see?
Oh, great question.
I can't think of.
No, it's okay, I put you on the spot, but I, I just wanted to ask because I like to hear it from you guys, right? So if you had something that, you know, you wanted to do, then maybe we could try and work on it. So, because we try to keep it in mind when we have people coming up with events, it's not just for one group or whatever, but trying to do stuff that as many people wanna get involved as possible, so that's why I'm asking.
Tell you what, if you think of it, let your teacher know, they know how to get ahold of us, okay? And then we'll get something done. Especially if there's a big class vote. We like those. Alright.
How do you decide where the town's money is spent?
So, um, so we have a defined amount of money and then all the departments ask us for a certain amount of money. Right, so then we have to look at it and a department might come in front of us and say, I need a hundred and fifty dollars, right? But we look and say, we only have a hundred and twenty-five and we try to work back and forth with them on what makes sense, where can we cut from? Maybe it's that we need to look at it and add to it because we think that something else is needed within that department based on all the things that we know. So there's no defined formula that says this is how we're gonna spend the money. Um, it's really based on the wants and needs um, by each department.
Right, yeah. So look at it like this, boys and girls, so in this room right now, you have about seventy-five kids, right? If every one of you paid me one penny, I would have seventy-five pennies, right? Now you guys all took a vote and you wanted and needed, so let's say you needed a place to live, that cost ten pennies, we have sixty-five left. You wanted a school, that's another fifteen pennies, right? Now we have, how many pennies we have left? Fifty pennies, right? So what happens next? Oh, now we gotta pay the bills on those pennies, on those buildings, right? So those are how we divide things up. We, we, like Selectman Zager said, every house you see essentially in Free Town has to pay X amount of dollars per month. So it's their hard earned dollars, so we have to make sure we're very careful how we spend them. Some people want us to spend more, some wants us to spend less, and we have to find that, again, that balance of making sure we have money left over in case something happens, like say it snowed, with, now we have to clean the streets or there's too much sand on the streets, now we have to clean the sand off the streets. All that costs extra that you weren't really planning for, so we have to be very careful how that money's spent. Um, and it's, it's very hard to do. But we have finance committees that help us, we have other boards and committees that give us information to make those decisions. So basically we ask you what you need and then we figure out how to get it, or sometimes we have to wait. So, some people love it, others don't, it's, it's a balancing act, it's tough. Get, get into politics, you'd be all for it. We could use your help too, if you have ideas, let us know. Alright?
How can you get the town to clean up the littered roads and sidewalks?
How do we get the towns to clean up the littered roads and sidewalks?
So, so recently, we had the Earth Day, right? Where a bunch of people, myself included, went out and picked up a crazy amount of litter on the side of the road. Um, I think the biggest and easiest way is for all of us to get out there and if we see something in front of our houses to pick it up, right? Um, but beyond that, we have talked about trying to do that event more as well as, you know, as well as, you know, having, uh, town employees go out and help with it. But we just talked about money, right? And we have things that need to be fixed, and we only have so much money to be able to give these departments. So it's tough for us to be able to get them out there. But I agree that I think we need to get, we need to try and figure out a way. And I think that one of our easier solutions might be for us to all just, if we see it out in front of our houses, help by picking up what we see as well as, you know, maybe if we do more events around it.
Yeah. No, it's, you're absolutely correct. So we had Earth Day recently, uh, we have In Vision Way that the town, the city of Fall River helps us clean up in that area. Um, so to the, using Selectman Zager's answer, I'll, I'll make it a little bit more simple. So ever heard the expression, doing the right thing even when the one's looking? Ever heard that before?
Yes.
So that, what that means is this. So let's say you're at a baseball field, Daniel, right? And you see a rapper blowing in the wind. Do you A, watch it blow in the wind, or do, or do you B, pick it up and throw it out?
Pick it up and throw it out.
Yeah, it could, sometimes it's as simple as that. If you see it, pick it up and throw it out, right? A lot of us kind of fall into the, the, the daily trap of, oh, it's not my problem. Well, if you care about it, it becomes your problem. So if you see it, pick it up. Now, is it frustrating when you keep picking it up? Sure. But the moral is, keep, keep going, don't give up on Mother Earth, right? Uh, we have people that forget that, there are other people out there that don't like the trash blowing in the wind. So if you see it, pick it up at the same time. If you, if you have trash, don't just throw it anywhere, especially in the oceans. It, it all starts with you, your age, your, your generation. Yeah, keep pushing it forward, make sure you're doing the right thing, even when it was looking. It really is simple as that. Uh, but if not, we'll create different parties and different org, different events to make sure that we get the adults out there to help us out. All right, guys? Good question, Daniel.
What can kids do to make our town better?
Hardest question of the day.
What can the kids do, huh? Well, one of the things that we just talked about is something, right? Picking things up. Um, that's definitely something. I'm gonna say, um, take pride in your town in general, right? Um, get involved, um, be good students. Um, yeah?
Yeah. Don't stop caring. That's the hardest thing we, sometimes we forget about, is care about your town. Care about your neighbors, your friends, your family, and help them. Help as much as you can, your town, your neighbors, everybody. Um, just be the perfect person you can be. It doesn't have to be every single day, but if it's fifty-one percent of your day, that's good enough, all right? Never stop caring, and your town will love you for it.
How long are you selectmen for? How often are elections?
So we're usually, we're selected for three years, and elections are every, so, elections are every single year. But when you, once you're elected, you have to wait three years. So there's three of us on the board. So every three years, we have to go through an election cycle. But every single year, we may get a new selectman. So like Selectman Zager said earlier, where I was just re-elected for another three years. He was elected last year, so he has another two years to go. Uh, and Selectman Matthews, he's got one more year or, uh, this time next year. So it's every three years for each individual person, but every single year, we have an election. So every time we take your school over, and you get half a day off, you're welcome, all right? It's because we're having elections on, in the gymnasium, um, and, and we have to make sure that the schools are safe. So we kick you guys out, you guys get to go home, and we get the adults, I know, you're welcome. And then we get the adults in here, and we vote for what the town needs. It's a great, great process.
Good job.
Is the town getting a new library soon?
Ooh. We really wanna get you one. Um, we were very fortunate that we got a grant, and hopefully that it will happen. But we unfortunately, at this point, have a lot of unanswered questions. But, um, I, I think, what do you think? You think we need a new one? No, you're not sure? I think we do. I, I love our two little libraries, but I think we can do a lot more for you guys if we had another new library. But we need to make sure that we do it in the right way.
Correct. Uh, so I'm actually the chairman of the library and the conservation subcommittee, and we're talking about those things as we speak. So like Selectman Zager said, we did get a, a federal grant that says, hey, you guys should build a library because your libraries are, are great, but they're small, and there's no running water. Can't go to the bathroom there, um, you can't have big events. You know, I'll be honest with you, when I first started thinking about libraries, I started going, who uses libraries still? Then I started realizing, I do. My children do. All you do. Who here has been in a library in the past year? Right?
Couple days ago.
Couple days ago, right? Libraries are important because it's like, almost like another way to learn, right? Read. Reading is the, the best thing in the world. You get to stretch your imagination, you get to be in different worlds sometimes, different planets, different fairy tales. Libraries, but, uh, isn't just about books, though. It's about your community, right? And teaching you different things and, and being together. And the more activities they do, it's, um, benefits you folks, you, you guys, right? Um, show of hands, so, so that I know, if you guys would be able to vote on a library, would you guys want a library? Yeah, is that, is that a big yes?
Ice cream.
Ice cream? Oh, ice rink, I thought you said ice cream. I was like, ice cream is very important. Uh, we'll see what we can do with the ice rink. Gymnasium? Yeah. So a good thing about libraries, they can, the, the walls sometimes move, and you can do different events in there, which is pretty cool. So library is something that, like Selectman Zager said, um, we're in the beginning stages of that process. The consul, uh, library and conservation, one big building, and we'll see where that goes. But let's, let's keep our fingers crossed that it happens. That way, we have a place to, uh, sit down and read when we're not in school. Good idea? Yeah. I'll look on the ice rink for you. Cause at first I thought it said ice cream, which I was even more excited about.
What made you wanna be a selectman?
Oh, gosh, uh, great question. What made you wanna be a selectman? Well, I had a great opportunity of being around the community quite a bit, from sports to events and everything else. And fortunately, a lot of your parents, um, many of your parents came up to me and started talking to me about things. And I decided that, let me go to more meetings, let me watch more meetings on YouTube and, and go to some in-person meetings and get involved to see what the town needed. And what I just, what I realized was, the town needed someone they can listen to and talk to, right? Not that they didn't have that, because they did. But sometimes you feel as though you can step in and, and do as good of a job as the next, as the person there, or hopefully better, right? Cause we always wanna leave the, better than we found it. And that's, that's how I came to, wanted to be a selectman. I realized our town, I love it as much as everybody else, and I had the, the time and energy to make decisions for our town, to make sure that we're here and have all the great memories that my kids are, are experiencing now. I want those to experience in the future as well. So that's why I wanted to be a selectman. Um, love my town.
Yeah. Mine was a love for the community. Um, and I have two kids that are a little bit older than you guys, but, um, they're in the schools. And one thing I've always told my kids is that if, don't complain about a problem, try and do something about the problem. And I found myself complaining about a couple of things. So I decided that it was my time to run, and I, I don't regret my decision, I love my decision.
So likewise. I think we've made some good decisions doing that. Let us know for now, okay? You're up, bud. You're gonna be just fine.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Is Freetown ever gonna be a city?
I don't, I don't think so. Um, the, the reason why is because, and there's probably, if we had the town clerk here, she would probably give me a whole different reasoning, um, based on the size of the lots that are in this town and the amount of space. The space is defined, and the size of the lots need to be defined. So I don't know that we could ever have enough population that it would ever become a city. No, we don't, I don't think anyone in here wants it to become a city. I love cities, but I don't want it to become a city.
It's the name Freetown. It's really called Freetown.
Yeah.
I, I like it. I like, I like, so, so, no, I agree with you guys. I, I think our town should, should stay as small as possible and, and stay a town for as long as we can. Uh, do I think it'll ever be a city? I, I don't think so, cause it was Selectman Zager said, and, um, and you're right, it has a lot to do with the population of our town. But I like a town with no stoplights, right? Don't you guys like a town with no stoplights?
No.
No stoplights, they're bad for us, right? No stoplights, that's right. But follow the traffic laws, but no stoplights. No, I, I think we're just gonna, in, we're two, we're about nine thousand two hundred people in town. It's, it's good for now. About nine thousand people, a little over nine thousand people. So, uh, that's enough for now. What do you think? Yeah, I, I don't think, uh, we're gonna be a city anytime soon. Uh, not in my generation, probably not in your lifetime. Um, more than likely, never, ever, ever. But you never know. Sometimes rules are changed for some reason, and, but like Selectman Zager said, uh, you know, our, some of the lot sizes are too big, and first to be a city, you have to have a lot of, a lot of bigger buildings and more space, and I don't think we're gonna expand anytime soon. What do you think? Should we stay a town?
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree with you. Free City? Sounds like a movie.
It is, it is in a movie.
Is it a movie?
The movie Free Guy. It's about a game called Free City.
I, I watched Free Guy, you're right. Yeah, you're right. So we'll make sure we keep it a town, right? If that changes, let us know, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
That's catchy. Mr. Lucas.
How many businesses are in town, or, and are there any more coming?
Ooh. I, I have no idea how many are in town. Um, and there's always businesses who are looking for the right places. But we don't, we don't even always get to hear about them right away. Only certain businesses come before us. But, um, yeah, I have a hard time answering that one because I don't have a, a specific number.
Right. So, yeah, it's tough, it's a tough one. Uh, so Freetown, lucky for us, we have some big businesses, like Stop &amp; Shop, Amazon in town, right? Then we have some small businesses, like the Moms and Pops, like, um, like Meme's Cupboard, right? Small business, right? But they do delicious things. So we, as far as what's coming, I don't know. Uh, are you looking for a restaurant? Are you looking for a game arcade area, mini golf? What, what kind of businesses do you want?
Um... I would say like either, I don't know, um... Probably any kind.
Any kind?
Okay.
Like rounded to the nearest hundred or thousand, how many businesses?
How many businesses? Hmm, I would say probably around a hundred.
Yeah.
Maybe, because it, yeah.
Give or take a hundred, yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Again, we have big and small, good mix.
Yeah.
But I don't know. Are you looking for a, if you're looking for a specific restaurant or, or gaming arcades? I don't know, those are things that people have to decide on their own. Then they come in for different boards to make sure, want it, zone for it, which is a big word, is, am I allowed to build it here, right? Cause you don't wanna build a race car place in, in your neighborhood, right? Well, maybe you do, all right? But maybe your moms and dads don't, right? So you have to make sure you're, it's zoned correctly or in the right area to build such a thing, and then you take it from there. If you're looking for an ice cream place, or I, I, again, I love ice cream, so I would agree with that as well.
Same.
Right, maybe a video games spot, right, like GameStop or something, that'd be awesome. Uh, but I don't want, but I definitely do not want a McDonald's or something like that. Not that I discourage McDonald's, of course, you can come here if you want and buy your property, but, you know, when you hear McDonald's, you think of a city, right? And I like, I like a little small town.
Don't say that in front of my brother here. He loves McDonald's.
I don't blame him. McDonald's is delicious. So, but if there's any suggestions, it, as far as what businesses they come to town, it's, at the end of the day, it's the business that decides where they wanna open up shop, right? Sometimes, uh, smaller town's probably not the best location for a small business. But if they come here, we'll cer- certainly listen, and if it's the right fit, we'll certainly let them in. Cause we're pro-business, we want businesses to come to town. So, but we don't know what businesses are out there. There are many, 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 many businesses out there that, that all of them fit in our small town.
Yeah, as we were just speaking, I, um, I made my decision, like, how many businesses as, like, restaurants?
What do you got?
Um... Like, like, um, how many restaurants, like, in town, or?
Oh.
How many restaurants are currently in town?
Or like Massachusetts.
Well, in Freetown, I think we have like a lot. Four Dunkin' Donuts in Massa, in Freetown, four Dunkin' Donuts, let's see, we have a couple of restaurants, we have barber shops, two restaurants, two big restaurants, one in the, the, the ledge in the tavern opposite ends of town. Uh, you have Rosenele's too, there's a breakfast place.
Smokey Bones.
Smokey Bones, that's in Ton, no, that's not in our town.
Sushi place.
Sushi place, used to be, yeah, the one in East Freetown. So there's plenty of things out there, you just gotta figure out which ones you like the most. Yeah. Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome, bud. All right, come on down.
Are there any town events coming up?
Yeah, town events. So, great question. Uh, so town events coming up, you know, we have the best Fourth of July parade coming up and fireworks display. That's in July fourth, third and fourth. Let's see, we have some yoga, in case you wanna do some stretching. We have, uh, bands, uh, so, summer concerts, like at the beginning in August, uh, instead of, uh, September, October, like last year. So we have a, a six or seven events for that, yoga, in case you like stretching, things like that. Uh, boat ramps is, is opened up, you know, we can get your boat out there if you have one. Let's see. Uh, we also have the beach opening up soon, um, and there should be some events there coming up, hopefully sooner than later. Sports are always there, right? We have plenty of baseball games, and I know the police and fire games coming up in a couple of months. They're probably practicing already. What else? You're getting out of school soon, I think July twentieth, right? Extra month? July? Yeah, okay, extra month for you guys? No, was it June instead? June better for you? Okay. Let's see. I think that's it, I think those, I'm sure I'm missing a lot of events in those out there.
Lakeside Festival.
Lakeside Festival, that's the one I was thinking about, thank you. That's either this weekend or next weekend. I wanna say it's the twentieth.
Yeah, it's the end of the month.
End of the month. So, yeah. Is there any events we missed? Tranberry Festival, is that what you said? There's road races coming up as well. You guys, are you guys subscribed to our newsletter? Just kidding, that's my joke of the day. Great. Yeah, we definitely have plenty of events coming up that we like to put out there and like notify individuals. Uh, there's also called the Freetown Flash, that we send out, uh, messages, letting you, the parents know what's coming up. So hopefully, they're getting those, if not, let us know, we'll get more information to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We'll open up the questions after.
What education and qualifications do you need to become a selectman?
Zero. Absolutely zero. Uh, so a lot of people think that you must have a master's degree or a doctorate or a bachelor's or associate's to be an elected official. Their answer is passion. You, as long as you're an adult, eighteen years or older, and actually, in some areas, some younger people than seven, eighteen and have been elected to, uh, public offices. Um, but for us, you know, if you're an adult, you, you wanna run for something, you can. That's all you need, is you need the time, the energy, and the passion to run for it. Cause some days are easy, some days are not, and they're mostly not easy. Because some days are easy, some days are not, and they're mostly not easy. Um, there's some good days you can smile. When I say easy, you can go home and smile that day. Uh, most of the time, I would say ninety-plus percent of the time, you, you go home going, I hope I made the right decision, right? Because it's very hard. But you don't need anything. As long as you, does it help you have an education, more education, as I've doctorate, masters, like I think I mentioned? Sure, and, I guess it could make it easy, but you don't need it. As long as you have the right attitude and the passion for it, and you wanna step up and say, you know what? I'll run for that office. That's all you need. That's all you need.
In, in Free Town, you have to be a, a registered voter, um, that lives in town. That's all that Selectman Lobes or I needed in order to run. Um, yeah.
Yeah. Forgot about that. More important step.
Yeah. All good.
Can we have any supermarkets in Free Town?
Supermarkets in Free Town? Yeah, um, that's, not, not the first time I've heard that question, to be honest with you. So supermarket, how big are we talking? Like a Stop &amp; Shop, like a Rojax, or a Rojax? That dates me. Gosh, are you talking about a big one or a little Moms and Pop one?
It doesn't really matter.
Does it matter? No, uh, we've, we've heard that question come up to us many times. How can we get more things like supermarkets, so that the folks in town can stay in town and not have to go to, let's say, Fall River, or Somerset, or something like that, or Ton to go to a supermarket to buy some groceries? And it comes down to the business wanting to come here and ask for that, right? Would we say no to a supermarket? No, I wouldn't necessarily say no or a yes. We would listen and see, make sure it's the right fit. Um, at the end of the day, town wants to be small. Bringing a big supermarket in, it's a lot of space, so we have to make sure that's the right balance, right? For the residents in town. No, would it be beneficial to our, to us to have something in town? Sure. But then that also means that other people can come here as well. Like, we go to their towns and cities, they can come to our towns and cities. So you gotta think about that, right? Traffic, and then maybe we need a stop sign or a stoplight. So those are things we'd, we'd have to talk about with the community, because that'd be a big decision, and it would shape, reshape that part of town, wherever it's in. So we'd have to bring that to town vote, and have the, the residents vote on, do you want a supermarket? A big supermarket, like a Stop &amp; Shop in town, right? And that'd be up to you folks. So if enough votes say yes, we'll say, we're, we're all for it. A lot of you say no, we don't, then we don't want it. Did I miss any, anything on that one?
It's, yeah, I think Selectman Lobes did a good job of answering. It, it's really, a lot of supermarkets, or even other big businesses, look at it and say, do they have enough people in their town that are gonna wanna shop at my location? And at this point, I think most of the time, the answer's gonna be no. And that's good, as far as to keep the town small, so we don't turn into a bigger place where we all loving our, the feel of our town that we keep talking about. So, um, I think at this point, you won't see one, but you never know what's gonna change in five years from now, so, yeah.
Yeah?
Can we start a community garden with rentable plots for people who don't have access to land of their own?
Hmm. I like that idea. So what we're gonna have to do is, we would have to come up with an area that the town owns, and then get some stuff around it. So we, we have someone who's in charge of community programming, and she's the one who's like put on the events that we would talk, some of the events that we were talking about before. So I like that idea. So let me see if I can ask Kylie, if maybe if she's already started doing anything, or knows of anything, and then maybe we can work with her, because I, I do think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Community, I, I, I like where you're going with it. You know, you're creating a community space, growing vegetables and, and plants and fruits and everything else for those that don't have the space for it. That's a great idea. I like that. Um, next step is, where do we put it? Right? So one of ours, one of the hardest parts about being a selectman is, great ideas come up, and then we, we like the idea, and now we gotta add more thought to it, is, where do we put it? How is it maintained? If no one shows up that, that week, that month, who, who takes the vegetables? Who pulls the weeds? Who mow, who mows it? Who tills it? So as the, as we've, it gets, it gets difficult. Uh, but I do like the idea. You know, you give them back to your community. That's what I hear, you know? Hmm, great question. We'll get back to you. We'll have to ask the questions.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Kylie? Um, what is Kylie's last?
Botelho.
Botelho, yeah. Yeah.
Do you still think the train is a good idea?
I knew it was coming at some point.
So here we are. Uh, okay, well, well, is the train a good idea? Alright, show of hands again. Who can hear the train at night? Okay. So, okay, let's, alright, so her question is, do we think the train's a good idea? Alright, so, alright, so hear the train, so you hear the train noise, alright? We don't love it so much, because we love a peaceful community. I'd rather hear the birds and insects in the middle of the night than the train go by. That we can all agree on. Now, do any of your parents or grandparents, aunts and uncles, uh, work, and let's say, Boston? Do they work in a city up north? Show of hands. Anybody work up north? Okay. Are they taking the train? Or are they driving? So, and that's where it is, right? So the train, we didn't really have much of a choice in town about where the, the train, the train tracks were already here for many years. They built a train station, that was the, our state government decided it was a good idea. So now our, our job is to kinda figure out, how do we work with the train? It's here to stay. We have very little say, did we want it? I, I don't think the vote would have been yes to that. So, but now it's here, now it's noisy, that's all we hear. So now we're getting more frustrated. So as the selectmen, we, we were doing everything we can, working with our low, our state government, alright? The, the Healy administration, our, our governor, and all our representatives in town, to figure out how do we move forward? How do we have a balanced, equal life, right? Because right now, it's a lot of give and take, and mostly they're just taking versus giving us peace of mind. So our quality of life is something that we're looking at. So we're working with them to figure out, how do we move forward with this? Because we can't live like this forever, right? We all need our sleep, right? Answer's yes. Sleep is important, alright? But also, summer's coming up, and do you wanna hear the train all day? No, I don't wanna hear the train all day either. So we're, we're working hard to get the right, the right balance. Right now, it seems one-sided, because it is, but we'll get there, we'll work together, and we'll figure out a solution. It's a tough one, that was a tough question. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, everybody.
I appreciate it, guys.
You guys did a great job today.
Yes, we did.
You guys have questions? Alright. What's your question, Daniel?